I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag.
I.
I am certified by the United States of America. A unified republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good approval of board meeting minutes for November 12th, 2025.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for November 12th, 2025.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded approved board meeting minutes for November 12th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion carries. All right, booster fundraiser. Class of 2026.
We will give the approval now that class of 2026 will be here.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the class of 2026 booster fundraisers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion carries. Right, discussion items. So first up on the list is Unified Robotics presentation. The plan here was to recess for about 15 minutes and go out and watch the unified. So if I could get motion for recess.
I'll make a motion at recess for the Unified Robotics presentation.
I'll second both.
Been moved and seconded to recess for approximately 15 minutes for Unified Robotics presentation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion approved. Trying to remember if you say we're at recess.
We're at recess.
We're at recess.
Right?
Yep. We're going to recess. It went really fast. Very good watch. Sorry.
I'll do the final thing now.
District, White River School District, who had already been doing standards-based reporting at the high school level for a long time to kind of learn from them. And it just really took off. So we developed a set of standards-based reporting principles that we can easily communicate to teachers, to families. Um, this is what we believe learning should be, should look like on a report card that grades would black have been some learning. That is about as simple as it gets. Where we started to kind of play around is thinking about the convergence scale. So as zero before, how does that translate into a percentage or grade point average and those types of things? So again, we looked at different examples from different districts. And then you'll hear from Tim Livingston in a minute, who actually has been standards-based rating for, for a minute. Um, and the team came up with, what could we do right now that would be manageable for staff? That would be easily understood for students, parents and counselors, because what we were running up against is because each grade look, each break, grade book looks kind of different. It was very, it's becoming hard for students to understand what was going on. It was very difficult for case managers to work with their special ed kids on how to improve. And the high school staff were really stressed about, but we work in percentages, GPAs, and what does this mean? So we kind of considered all of that and landed on this. But I think what made a huge difference is having staff kind of talk at the table about, here are some of the principles we've already employed in our classrooms. And here's what students have said about it, and Tim will kind of speak to that.
So we came up with this because we looked at some other districts, and I've been doing this for a while. Few years ago, I really liked standards because standards allow you to show what does a student know, or what does a student need to work on? If I give a percentage, if I give a seventy-two percent, what does that really mean? Breaking this down by the standards where you can say, okay, an approaching proficiency, you're close, you've made some skills, you've done some things. So for me, it provides me the ability to really give clear feedback to my students. And my students like it. They're like, oh, now I know what I need to work on. The nice thing about standard space, it's not a one and done. If you messed up on something, you always have that opportunity to go back and show that you've mastered, that you can do something, you can do something a little bit better. My kids really like that. I mean, as a student, when I was a kid, you know, I'd get a paperback that has all that red mark. We were all there. But all the red mark, and you really didn't know what, what you could do. And it was like, oh, too bad, do that next time. I think what standard space really does is gives that immediate feedback. And then kids can go, oh, it's not at all, at all cost. They can go back and do it. What I'm seeing in my classrooms where it used to be task completion, oh, if I do this, it's almost like, oh, if I jump through the hoop, I get this. Now standard space, it's like, okay, this is what I need to do. It's like to get to learning. So we have better conversations about learning. And that's what I've been seeing in my class for the last couple of years, really, really this year, is we're all moving towards it. We're seeing the kids really get behind it.
And what's crazy, some of the high school kids are a little troubled by it because they're just not used to this way of, of looking at their learning at the high school level. But what it allows teachers to do and kids to do with each other is have this really robust discourse about, man, I was really hoping I was going to be proficient on this assignment. And for kids to say, but I know now what I need to do. I know exactly what skills I need to work on to get to proficiency and then having those opportunities to do it. And that's what one of Tim's students said so well, um, this afternoon is like, I always knew what I needed to do to get better in Mr. Livingston's class. It was never a mystery to me.
And if I didn't do it, I knew I wasn't getting that. That was perfect.
So then Crystal Stanley is our special education representative on the team. And we got to talking, we did a site visit actually to Kent Lake High School. We were looking at co-teaching. Um, then we started trailing off and building thinking classrooms, but you'll learn about that in January. But then we started talking about how can standards-based reporting um, impact our multilingual students and our special education students?
So I just want to say, uh, first off, thank you, Tasha, for having a chance to talk to all these other schools. And we've had a lot of questions. We've had a lot of, what does this look like? And then I come in and I always like to ask the questions about my students, right? All of our students, but our students who have an IEP who have higher needs. How do we help them? How do we, how do we include that need as well? We were always looking at the bigger picture. But these students are part of that picture and sometimes they get left behind because the bigger picture still has to be solved. So Tasha, thank you for, for providing that time. Um, so I've, I've noticed the same thing as Tim. Um, beginning of the year was really, really, um, hard for our kids, like explaining this, these standards and how it all works and the changes. Um, but it's been amazing. I've had students, um, who have an IEP that are used to just getting by. Part of that is because when they're in a general education class, it's not always fully taught yet. We're getting there on how that student should be graded, right? And so, um, they often get a grade because they try, right? And that's all good and well, except it's not for the student. So we're able to in a special ed class now, um, I've done it in different classes. But in this one, I've had students come up to me and, and ask me, well, I turned in all my work. Why do I have a D? Well, why, why should the, that you turn in all your work have anything to do with the D, right? And so that's not what I said to them, but we were able to open up and have an amazing conversation about what a one means. You know, one-on-one's not that bad. You're at the beginning. You're a freshman. You're just starting my classroom where you're supposed to be. The great part, and this is the hard part, let's put the grade aside for a sec and look at what you've done. Look at where you're going. Look what you're going to be able to do. And let's look at that skill. You need the board now, but now, now you have a two. You're able to do it with just a little bit of support. And so letting them know what they need to work on, letting them know that their answer of what color is the sky? The sky is blue or blue. Blue's not, blue's a, blue's a one. The sky is blue because state that claim, state the evidence, state the reasoning. Having that deeper talk to get them to understand where it means more to them because you've got that standard involved and you can break it down. It's been amazing for my students and to watch them grow and watch them to, watch them own it. It's been really, really great.
And can I just chime in too and just to your horn? And here's some of the power of it. I was in Crystal's class the other day and students were reading Tale Tale Heart. This was a tier three special education class exploring Edgar Allan Poe, writing paragraphs, playing evidence, reasoning. You just really wouldn't guess that was special ed class. And that is the power of standards based. They know exactly what they need to do.
Yeah. So whether they can read all of Poe and understand all that, of course, we did pre-reading talks. We looked at BoCAB, and most of the time I break it down to like a third grade level. But we were talking about co-teaching after we went to Kent Lake and we're like, why, why am I doing that? So instead we did it, but we had it read aloud to us and we stopped at every, every paragraph. And we annotated it. And I'm getting chilled as we're talking because at the end of that unit, two of my students were like, and Stanley, I hate English, but I really like this story. And I was like, oh my gosh, Tasha, you gotta hear this. Like, I was so excited. It was absolutely amazing. And we're seeing more and more of that because our kids are seeing what they need to do and that they can do it. We're showing them that they can do it. We're not saying, you know what? Just try. Just try. We're saying, no, give us claim evidence, reason, this is what it looks like. So that's been really, really great. And the other thing, I could talk all day, obviously you guys have heard me. Uh, but the last thing I'll say is I also love how mastery-based grading, um, aligns with IEP goals. Um, it's really nice to, sometimes when you have a student who has served in special education, but in a general education class, that can happen. It's nice to be able to write an IEP goal and you can go to somebody's grade book and see what, how they're doing when I'm writing progress reports or when I'm checking on my kids. Of course, I'll talk to the teacher themselves. But I can also see on standard nine point two comprehending informational text, they're getting a two on it. And last quarter they got a one point five. So that's really helping in that way. The one thing, sorry, look at me, I'm already talking again. The one thing I will say, um, that is the struggle right now. It's the comment across the state, that pass or fail grading. What are we going to do with that PRF on P equals IEP card? I mean, I have IEP card. On their IEPs, they have pass or fail weekend mark, and some of those kids have that. So what does that mean in standard-based grading? We've been having big talks around that, and that's a bigger talk to include you guys in. Um, but what does that look like for pass or fail? So that's one of our big questions, and that came up the last time, but we're like, let's table that. Till we get through this main talk, but that's that next talk. And I'm so excited because I've been being me loud and, and people speaking about it. But, uh, it's important, it's important for our kids and we need to have a talk. What does LMS stand for for that? What does that look like on our new path? And so, but I'm really excited, um, for the first time in a long time of all the work we're doing, um, to get moving in the right way. So I'll stop because you know I can go on.
You haven't talked too much.
I know, right? That's me. So I'm going to run back out there. So if anyone needs me, I'm out there.
I have a huge shout out to John Guerrero as well. Um, you know, Eric is so busy with all the things. And so I feel like it's been a nice partnership to kind of marry um, the technical side of things and then have John Guerrero really do some instructional leadership around. As a teacher in the classroom, this is what it can look like. This is what, um, operationally it could look like. He's put together training videos. He's leading our staff development and making it very, very manageable for our staff. So if you wouldn't mind just.
So we started with Skyward, and Skyward, uh, rest of the reason is a percentage base, and it just isn't mastery-based, it's not standard-based. So I dug in the Skyward and I was able to create a standards-based recording system in there by using, uh, no evidence, no counts for, um, practices. Using evidence, no counts for evidence to show zero through four progress, and then using a standards-based, um, a standards-based column that is a percentage. It's a average of the evidences. And then convert it into that translation so that our kids can see it. In a perfect world, our kids should never see that percentage. I think that is detrimental to our students in the SPG world. That if they're seeing that percentage, they're still working towards that percentage, and that's not the goal. We are seeing though, in my class and Tim's class, is that they are looking only at our proficiency levels. My kids don't even care what their percentage is. They just won't, don't want to be failing. And we've had those robust conversations with our kids of, you're at a one, this is the third week of school. We're barely into the stuff. Come on, we're, we'll get there. I have kids that know that they'll be in a level three by middle or third quarter. We have to cross that whole entire bridge of first semester. So looking at this, the letter grade just is a hindrance for them. So as we move forward and we get into cumulative, and we go into the standards-based recording, it's going to be nice nested and at the very end, that translation will come in. That percentage translation comes in at the very end, and we don't have to let our kids see it. And I think that's a very key piece of this is moving forward, is that if our teachers are together doing mastery-based, standards-based reporting, that it gets together and moving, the kids can see where they're going. Um, I talked with the middle school and yesterday it was no percentage grades at all. It'd be nice if there was no percentage grades at middle school so they always know their mastery movement. So then when they get here, it's like, hey, you're a level one here. We already know where you're at. We know where it's like you this way. We know, we know your deficiencies. So getting us all together on that realm is awesome. But Eric and I are working, I still have to see cumulative a hundred percent. I saw a couple of videos from different districts, so I know how it works. I understand the concepts. And if I watched those videos, what I created in Skyward this year actually coincides a hundred percent with what's going on in cumulative next year. So my goal was, when we first started this up and I was going through the grade book and as I was giving grades to kids on zero and four, this calculated percentage of seventy-five percent, fifty percent, zero, or a hundred percent, which is not mastery-based and it's not even close to what we're doing here. So I set it, set it up so there was no counts for anything. What we found was even though we were putting those zero through fours that said no count in the other side, when the kids see it, they were still seeing that fifty percent, seventy-five percent. They were seeing those low grades again. And it's triggering them to think, well, I'm not, not doing my part. We don't want to see that percentage is not going to be their part. We want them to see that meeting approaching. I know what I need to do to go to here. That percentage, like Tim said, arbitrary. It doesn't matter though. So that's what we're doing right now. And I put together a nice website in the beginning of summer. And we're ready to move forward with, it's putting more into that. However, I found over the summer that we were deficient in many things. Uh, we didn't have a scope sequence. We didn't have our prefer, our prefer, proficiency scales set up correctly. And so that's what we've been doing this year. And every single light start is us going through all the pieces and checklist to get to next year when cumulative rolls out, we can just go.
And part of the work that's been so important too is this vertical alignment. So during light starts, we have um, grade six through twelve sit-together departments. So that we know exactly, let's say eighth grade, we have eighth grade math. Our ninth grade Algebra One teachers are going to know exactly what these kids in eighth grade math got. As far as standards, where they are as far as mastery of standards. Um, and we're doing the same across English as well. Because that was also really clear with just so many standards in both content area. Grade level teams have to decide which priority standards they're going to focus on at each grade level and then collaborate vertically to make sure the kids are getting everything they need through senior year. So that is some of the work that's starting this year that will continue into next year. And what I did include in this, and then I want you to talk a little bit about math, is, um, we've also developed language for what our corresponding rubrics will say in them. So as kids are unpacking the rubrics and really being able to articulate, what is a three, what is a three, how is that different than a four, and so on. Kids are going to have it really dialed in about how to hit proficiency or go into advanced mastery, you know, after a couple of years.
I, I have a comment question. Um, as we keep rolling forward and really getting a hold of this and students understanding this fully, are you finding or seeing, I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing is that you're seeing a lot, uh, students have less anxiety focused around those percentages when they're seeing this, which are you seeing that they're opening themselves to be more proactive in their educational experience?
Yeah, I see it. So I teach martial arts and media arts, but I taught math for a lot of years as well. What I saw was kids were always trying to get that past up. And I still see it today, but I've seen some of those kids step back, like, oh, it was jump work, I better work harder. I know where I need to be. And that's the key is if they know where they need to be and they do that self-assessment, they're learning way more. That self-assessment is key because I can tell them and hit them in the head with everything I have. But until they make that realization and that discovery themselves, that concrete information is not in their head. So if they're making those self-assessments and making those, those choices on their own, because our practice is over zero. So if they're not doing homework, they're just not practicing. And I played to them as a baseball team. You go up to baseball and you hit on a tee, you hit on a tee, you're not being graded on that. Your coach is watching you. You're getting in the game, and you're never going to get in the game if you're not hitting on a tee, because we don't even know what you can hit. We don't know what you can do. You can't field. We don't know what you can do. So now that zero has come to a one, because at least they're showing you something. I had a kid that sat in my class for three weeks this year. Three weeks and nothing. Said he had a mental block. Nothing was working. I, you know, joking with him, did what I could. Finally, we started just, he said, I got a zero. I'm never going to recover from this. I was like, no, you don't have a zero. You have a zero percentage. You haven't done anything. Let's do this. Let's do this. You can see a little tiny movements. And if a kid can be successful in that much, they'll be successful tomorrow. But if they're never successful, they can't ever find that success. They're never going to take it upon themselves to self-assess or do anything else. That kid is now in week ten and working every single day. No mental block because it's doable. It's not impossible. So I think about that in the English class, the math class, where it is impossible for some kids. It literally is an impossibility to sit in that class and pay attention when I don't know anything because I'm in ninth grade and I only know fifth grade. So now that I can say, oh, I can get this, I can get this, I can get the pieces. I know how to move to here. I can at least get a two. Maybe a one point five. It's been a zero. So that's what I see with my kids.
I really just have to, one more time, I just have to commend the job and the work that goes into this because you, you're redesigning and refocusing and you're also dealing with a student body who's used to coming into school and week by week, you can, A, you can get an F and you're like, I thought I had it. So kind of trying to reprogram them is, is a big job on top of it. So thank you guys again for all that work.
And I just wanted, I know we've taken a lot of time, but Amanda, to talk about math because it lends itself so nicely to what John was saying. When we think about mathematics now in my school, it is really clear our students struggle. And they are very conflicted with math. And I don't even have to look at grade books to know that because I hear kids in my office like, oh, I suck at math. I'm horrible. I'm going to fail. I'm horrible. And then I'm going to have to do summer school. I mean, they just have this negative dialogue. And so Amanda's been working in standards as well, along with creating the link thinking classrooms, which you'll get to experience in January. But I just like, would, would like you to talk about how you're tackling that.
Sure, sure. So picking away the idea of task completion in math, um, has opened up a lot of opportunities kind of on both levels with the enrichment and the reteach of trying to meet students where they're at and moving them to that next level. Um, so I think about like in the old days when kids would come in for tutoring and they had ten missing homework assignments. It was, how can we get these kids through these homework assignments as fast as possible to get them the points that they need to, to get to that passing level? Now it's more in tutoring and when kids come in for help at lunch or whenever and sitting around the table or going up to the whiteboards, um, and working on problems. And where are you at? What do you understand? Okay, let's try this problem. Okay, now you've got that done. Let's try this over here. Okay, let's explore this idea over here. So the, the remediation piece of it has really grown a lot into what do you understand and how can I move you on? Um, and the flexibility in the standards-based grading has allowed me to say, okay, this kid, you know, they were at a fifty percent, they really, they weren't getting it at all. And now I can see them moving up. And I can even go into the grade book and, um, give them a couple more points to say, yeah, you got to a level one today. Let me give you some hope. Let me give you some hope because you're, it's just a level one. So let me give you that hope that you demonstrated to me that you could do that. Okay, now on the quiz, let's hopefully maintain that, that knowledge. So it's really focused them in on growing rather than just getting those homework assignments done as fast as possible to get the points. Um, with that, we've been trying to build, uh, thinking classrooms in the math, um, for the last couple of weeks. So we've got a grade book from Tasha that we've been reading. Um, and it's all about, um, building them into critical thinkers and, um, letting them explore the math more than giving them the algorithms and giving the steps and the processes. And because we're not so focused on task completion and giving them points for what they're doing, um, I'm able to, to have more exploratory activities. Because I'm not worried about them demonstrating this and this and this and this, you know, I, I want them to explore the math and have real life lessons that they can remember later on. We did a hot dog cart activity and they were able to explore that. And then when we got into the more nitty gritty of the, of the math, then we were able to kind of go back to that. And so that, that exploratory classroom these last couple of weeks, I've seen the students that were low really kind of come out and shine, um, because they're understanding and they're working with their peers. Um, and the mastery-based or the standards-based has kind of opened that up to be able to be more flexible in the classroom because I'm not worried about getting all these homework and practice assignments and, um, I can kind of, uh, flex where they need to be. Um, and then it's also helped with the enrichment piece as well of if I see a student who's, they've got it down and they're shining, I can go over to where they're working with their partner and I can say, hey, let's try this challenge right here. And I can throw different things at different groups. So between the, the standards-based and the building thinking classrooms, I'm super excited to show you guys. Um, tho- those two things have really married well together because, um, it's getting them to explore more. It's getting them deeper knowledge. Um, and it's giving those kids that in the old traditional way, might have been at like thirty or forty percent because they just weren't doing any work. Um, it's gotten them into that area of hope and being able to probably pass the class because they're understanding more.
We're on a difficult hump, Amanda, so I just got a question for you. So as we've been mapping out our standards alignment, new information has been coming to light. So when they're talking about task alignment, they're talking about, is the class built around, is the outcome built around, I need to do my assignments? Or is the outcome built around, I need to learn what this class is requiring that I learn? Right? And we are all adults and we've been on the job. So your boss can either A, tell you to just get the stack of paperwork done and you can shut your brain off and get the paperwork done. I like to think it's talking about how in my household, I refuse to fold laundry because I can't shut my brain off to do it. My wife picks it up. She's like, I can turn the show on and just fold laundry, shut my brain off and I can have it all done. I can't, I'm not lucky enough to do that. But a lot of our students are also lucky enough to be able to shut their brain off, crank out all of the mass amount of schoolwork, learn absolutely nothing, turn it in and get the grade. And that means that that's really what is our job to do. Is our job to give students tiles and stacks of work to do? Or is our job to give students learning that happens? Now, what we realized through our standards of review audit, we're kind of benchmark that. We began looking at our students on where they are as they're coming to high school. And we began mapping out what standards have been taught and where they are. And what started to become obvious is we had a serious gap. And then we wanted to look at the pacing guide on the gap of, the student knowledge gap. And on the pacing guide and where was that knowledge supposed to be acquired? Where was it being taught? We found out like at the end of courses, about twenty-five percent of the standards at the end of the course aren't being done. And then conversations came out, well, I'm running out of time. Like I just ran out of time, so I didn't cover the last twenty-five percent of the class. So now what's happening is, is it really kind of painted a problem, like how long has this been going on? It's been going on a while. So now we have math programs going, oh, I need to backfill twenty-five percent of what wasn't there. So I guess my question is, is are you finding this process now that we can be targeted on learning? Now we can be targeted on learning where the gaps were when we were task-focused. On, are you able to balance the backfilling of the twenty-five percent that wasn't taught as you're trying to front load the new part that you do need to learn? Because I know this is a problem we've come across. Like we can define the problem now.
Yeah, I think it, um, so with the, especially with the think booth classrooms, because we're not focused on, um, what they call mimicking, um, you know, just copying what the teacher's doing up on the board there. Um, I have more time to talk to each of the students and explore each student's individual learning because I'm doing far less direct instruction. So if I go up to a group and there's three kiddos in a group, I talk to each of those kiddos. And if there's a deficiency there, I'm able to kind of intervene in the moment of, well, what are you not understanding about what we're working on? And is there a skill with this group that I need to talk about? Um, so it gives, instead of me having to backfill with the entire class where maybe only half of the kiddos needed it, um, I don't have to spend that time backfilling in like a direct instruction type of approach. I can backfill with the students individually if needed or in a small group.
So moving the locus control to the students, having the students work through the learning that needs to happen, not moving all students through a task alignment because that, you know, you have to do the homework. But saying, no, work on where your learning is. And then you're walking around helping out them out where their learning is, where they're at. And then you can provide direct help. So by really shifting the priority from, did you do your work? You got to do your work. You're not, I mean, who's, where else are you going to learn to have a work ethic? If you don't do this work to, what do you need to learn? Has also made it so you can be much more efficient and it's not, I mean, the lesson, it doesn't sound like the lesson planning is harder now because you've shifted the lesson locus of control to them.
Yes, a hundred percent. And, you know, I'm, I'm planning out activities, but those activities are a lot less like me spending an hour making a PowerPoint. It's more of me spending an hour figuring out like what the main idea of the lesson is. And then if a student's falling behind, where do I need to go with it? If they need an extension, where do I need to go with it? So whereas my lesson before might have been hitting this group of kiddos in the middle, I'm spending the same amount of time planning, but I'm able to, to umbrella them a lot better.
And so you'll get to experience an actual building thinking classroom lesson in January. And really, it's something that can be applied across every content area. We're starting with math because we really want kids to be able to talk about math, feel good about math. And develop that, you know, understand the productive struggle is that they're growing as learners.
The best thing I've seen is that active engagement with the, with the kids. Um, you know, I can think of a handful of kids right now who, if I'm up in front, talking to them, they're or maybe they're writing some notes, but they're not really hearing what I'm saying. Um, and these kiddos, they all have to be involved. And as I go group to group, I talk to every one of my kids. You know, I, I was thinking to myself the other day, um, you know, I talked to Ted, every single kid multiple times today in this class. And I know some days that doesn't always happen, whether I'm direct instruction or if they're doing an activity. I got ten kids raising their hand and one kid sitting there never raising their hand. I might never even get over to that kiddo. I know there's days where I'm like, how did you talk to you today? How did you do today? Like I never got over to you. But this time, because I'm going group to group to group and talking to each of them, I'm hitting everybody multiple times.
Do you guys get an opportunity to walk through, check your class out? It's, it's amazing. I went there and did an observation. I just thought, how engaged kids were with that. Like I've never seen. Tons of reluctant learners participating. Visually, like you can tell.
I can get you guys books too if you'd like.
That order, number two.
Can you, someone, well, first, I just want to say something instead of bringing Tasha that it, I was like, I mean, I knew this and just like, ah, the significance of aligning what we're doing here with being high stakes things that are outside of all this chemistry. These are still kids that want scholarships or competing, no matter what, no matter what we're doing here, they're still competing for a scholarship is not asking what they're, they're not asking this. They want to know what's your GPA, you know? Goals and all of those pieces. Um, I'm just kind of curious, how does, how do grade checks look? I think, you know, when it's, when it's first quarter, uh, or it's, or even a, you know, not sports, but that's an easy black and white. Um, zeros or ones, a, a one point five.
Um, zeros or ones, a a one point five doesn't seem like it will serve that well. So how is that communicated in relation to a grade? You know, makes sense that the end of the year, the grade by the end of the year, you got to um a a three or a three point five, but. You wouldn't expect a kid to be at three point five in October, right?
And that is part of what we're continuing to work on as leadership team and part of what you guys will need to be a part of as well. We literally have just started crafting what it could look like, not mandate it, but what it could look like. Um, we know there are several pieces we need to consider about athletic eligibility. And I would just reach out to some of the uh my friends in other schools who've done this at high school. How does this look when we're doing two week grade chefs? How does this look? You know, what point when we have kids applying for scholarship, do we need to translate? The standard into a percentage for scholarships. So we still have a lot to learn. We're just at the beginning.
So so right now, we wouldn't really, even though the goal is for the kids to know by the end of the year. I want to be here. We don't really have a way to communicate. Um, I'm probably gonna say this wrong, but to a parent, you don't really have a way to communicate to a parent that a student that is. Truly on track and working a tell off and doing all the right stuff, you wouldn't expect them to be on three. But if we give them a score of a one point five, I mean, I guess, just me as a parent, I would not be okay if all of a sudden my kids came home and. And you said, but don't worry, they're doing awesome. They've got S P. I would be like, that doesn't feel like that they're being awesome. But yeah, we're. Totally, it doesn't translate. So I guess I'm hearing you say we don't have, we don't have that system yet.
Yes, because we're really, we're really thinking about how can we make what's happening at the high school? More consistent for our students, teachers, parents, counselors. What can we do? Part of what is going to be really important when we launch this completely. Is every district I've talked to, they're like, there are common expectations for how frequently grades are entered into the grade book. It has to be because what we can't do is have a student saying a one point five. And then it's time to compete for a five, you know, for a scholarship and. Parents have been told your kids find, your kids find, your kids find, and that student ends up with a two and it's not fine. And so we still need to do some calibrating around what a one, one point five, two looks like. We need to come to an agreement about um when we enter grades into the grade book. No, we we cannot do grade dumping. And we have to come up with some common expectations around how we're recording student progress to parents.
I I can communicate with her a little bit too. In my house, you know, I'm living in a standards world, but I'm in a percentage system. And so a lot of time, you look at my grade book, you're gonna see a lot of percentages. But my kids know, oh, I got a seventy, so I know I'm at a two. So I'm kind of trying to marry those two things. So kid knows where they're at. But they know it's it's a standard. They know what they need to do, but it's kind of that. I I understand we live in a percentage world right now.
And what we don't have is consistency around that across every content area. And we really do need to get there. Um, so that we're all communicating the same way.
Well, because I think like at the elementary school, the conversation is with the parent. They're only at a two point five, but that's where they should be for right now in this time because we don't have. A letter grade that's also attached that's affecting a GPA, right? And so the parent, the parent would only need to be concerned if they said they should be at a two point five, but they're only at a one, so they're behind. Or like they should be at a two point five, but they're already at a three point five. A parent can understand that concept. But also at the high school level or even middle school, um. Expecting parents to not really have a final grade thought rate of a kid until May or June. On an October issue isn't going to serve them very well, I would assume. Okay?
No, I'm leaning on expertise to follow this number first.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's even issues around like early eligibility, like in September, like there may not be in a standard to assess yet. Right? Because we're still doing.
Right.
Layers of practice, it's only a game two or something. They don't have a grade. So I know we're still talking about ways how we can sure of that, because we don't know how to determine eligibility.
Because our kids still have to live in, no matter what happens, that means while that's not the system.
Right, if there's, there'd be a difference between like if there was four practices and no grade, but like you did all four versus someone's like, man. Because it doesn't count against me. So what I already figured out, what does that look like?
So this is a weird year because it's a hybrid year. We didn't know what to expect going into this. We started with a standard skyward. Next year, we put that S to the standard space grade in cumulative. There's an audio place in there for, we don't know everything about it, but there's got to be a place to say this was only assessed to a level two. There's those comments that the elementary school already puts in there. We are gonna need to put those into. It's gonna be more communication on the teacher for sure and communication with the parent. I talked about the two teacher, parent teacher conferences look way different next year. This year, we're still in that weird mode of, here's your percentage, here's this, here's that, we're just trying to get it out there. Next year, there has to be that, here's where your kid is. It's a, it's not even for every kid. That's what that standard-based reporting part is. Here's where you're at, here's where you need to go, here's where you, here's where you can go. But next year, without that percentage in there, we're gonna have to rely on some different creative ways to see that first three weeks. I had that problem. I had no grades. I had grades, I had evidence, I had practice, but not enough to give someone. They were all at once. They're all learning graphic. There's a couple who's in there, maybe a three, but we both were everyone and then a sixty percent. So I can't relate that, correct? Because their kid isn't at a sixty percent. They're just at a one right now. But I give my kids in CTA a work-based learning grade because you have to be on time. You have to do your work. You have to show your show up. That is your percentage for the first nine weeks is kind of where I got with it. But in C T, I can afford to give them a work-based, certainly because that's what we're doing in that class. So we're learning how to be, you know, career college readiness. Uh, I don't know how that looks in the regular classroom, but that first direct three or four weeks, there may not be a good grade. And you're sitting at sixteen, fifty percent, but really, they're a hundred percent. They don't work the whole time.
That it?
Thank you guys so much.
Very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the work you guys have done. I appreciate it.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, I do. Keep forgetting our holiday.
I know.
Right? Now, a really update from. All right, strategic plan update. Uh, I figured I would kind of round it out, but I don't have to necessarily sit here and talk about it the entire time. I can actually probably sum it up uh in an email as far as uh each one goes. We sent out some evidence from each one of them that had put together um a strategic plan. But uh just a few things on each one is where I thought I'd go unless you guys had some specific questions. Uh, just looking back at some of the evidence that each of them had presented, um. Uh, Dr. Broke, when she first talks about her blueprint, she talks a lot about usable guide. Um, and wants to do more like a cultural alignment with our current instruction and academic uh system step. So she's a little less on the action plan, still kind of has that, but it's it's a more visual plan than I would say the other two are. Um, uh, lots of communication with all three of these. I think one thing that's kind of been standard across all three. Is they're all about inclusion, um, uh, communication. Uh, about the process and the integrity of the process and being transparent. All three of them said that, that the only difference. I think is in the blueprint, um, for the most part of how we go about that. So the first one was more about the cultural steps. Um, how we're gonna make a cultural movement um in our, maybe our alignment and our culture and our current instruction to get to our strategic plan. Uh, the the second one, as you can see with McClary's, is a little bit more um tabulated, right? Like a little kind of action plan, moves through lots of little goals and kind of moves towards that. And then the last one. Um, she has pillars, which I'm gonna reach back out and see if I can get the presentation that she sent us, because I thought I had it and I didn't. But she talks about the pillars which she works from and then works towards that. And she she's done some work with uh East Valley. I talked to Brian, that's Brian, right? At the conference, he said they were really happy with um the work that she did and how they were able to. Uh, work with her and align um community voice with where they were going with um. Some of the similar systems that we have with the data dashboard and kind of how we've been um measuring things and moving forward. So I can put some of that together and um send it to you guys' way, but all in all, I mean, they're all. Great candidates. I, I don't want to be the one to uh.
Yeah, I guess was there um, was there a recommendation on one you would like us to pursue a contract with? I don't think it requires action.
I I think I'm confused. Who, who, well, even Dr. Brooks is. Um, and maybe it's because I'm misfacing, but each one of these plans that we that you sent as samples. Were they drafted by different, when you say make or make?
Well, it's a really interesting part of it, right? Because not every one of them actually drafts. The actual final product is put together by probably an E S D of some sort. But their action plan, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, is kind of put together by them. The pieces are put together.
They do the community engagement, these get the community feedback and then they, and then they make the final product. Um, one of them, McClary's is built by the E S D.
I guess that's how I was wondering. So McClary's is the E S D. And who's, who's is Spokane?
She did that. That's. Yeah, she did that whole one.
And then. Who's the culture of belonging?
That's Dr. Brooks. And she does the work on Oakville.
Which I can send you this. I should have sent that earlier today. I actually have.
I mean, oh, you've sent us the.
Well, I sent you each one of them, but then I for myself actually wrote one of them down and put like what they do and which schools they went to, like one, two and three. But I did that today.
Who are the three choices that we have?
Dr. Brooks, Paula, and Dr. Campbell, the scholar first one.
And do we have something?
From each one of them?
From each one of them, is that what you're saying? You you are holding right now.
So I put something together for myself because I was getting very confusing with the amount, right? Because we get an email from each one of them and then there's an associated plan with it. And if you're not keeping those straight in your email box, it's really easy to get them mixed for one another.
So you broke it down?
I did.
Each one does this specific thing?
Yeah, which to some extent they.
I'll do the same.
Okay, because I feel like the only one I'm seeing is that, that you sent us that has. Like that, you know, the culture belonging and action plan and early doctors. Is that what you're talking about?
So that was that one in the middle of last meeting. Those first two are actually part of uh. Uh, Dr. Brooks and then uh E V is uh Dr. Campbell. And then uh the McClary one is Paula.
Okay.
Looking at all three of them, I was really drawn to the East Valley one.
Yeah.
I like smart iterations of what they actually do.
I like the McClary one, but it was way too long.
Yeah.
I kind of liked the hybrid of Catholic, McLaren, Catholic's Valley.
You what?
I like the hybrid of kind of McClary and you still, I actually thought McClary's was, but it got way too much. But I liked the, like the beginning and the overview and I like the the look of it and overall, but. It has so much. It almost feels overwhelming, like there's no way you're gonna get on.
Now, the look, the look of it, the beginning of it, none of that was done by the person doing the strategic plan. That was all work done by the E S D to um apply a communications marketing player on it.
Okay.
So those pieces aren't what the strategic plan does. The beginning, the introduction, the district profile.
Yeah, but but the meat of it is big.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the the piece that she showed us, it actually has, like you go through and it's a rubric, like this is our goal. This is how we're gonna get to it. Step one, two, three and four. And then we go down to our next goal, step one, two, three and four. Very prescriptive, very easy to follow. Um, but every time you see these actual nice strategic plans are very fluffy. And hey, this is awesome things we're doing, but it's not the bare bones of this is the action. And that's what I'm kind of saying is that McClary's is in-your-face action plan that you see. Um, the the two, uh, Dr. Brooks and Campbell, they're both, um, they have an action plan. But you're not gonna see that in the actual strategic fluff piece that's put out that we're seeing. Does that make sense? So like uh the East Valley one, it'd be interesting to see their actual action plan. So. I think that's something, if you need more information, we could probably get that from Brian, I would assume.
Yeah, I guess.
Same with Dr. Brooks. She put a slew of recommendations on there and I went through and went, tried to find all those strategic plans, but districts are very um. Mixed on how they post their strategic plan and what they post. So, and hard time finding a few of them. So, if you need more information, it's not necessarily a bad thing. We just need to get a decision, Chris. Collectively, sooner rather than later. Hoping to, timeline was hoping to commission and start moving in January. But I mean, he, we obviously have to get them going before we can, you know, start in January.
Yeah.
Is there one that you guys were leaning towards?
I really liked the East Valley one when I had the conversation with her, but then there part of me really liked the cultural. Um, part from Dr. Brooks, so I was kind of in the middle hoping that somebody would.
Uh, Michael, what was the cultural one of hers? Was that just that single one page thing?
Yeah, it's a single one thing that that.
See, I didn't feel like that said anything. To me, that looked like that could have been off of a, a one-page TikTok that. It's a big grab from anything.
Yeah, it could have been.
I mean, it.
But then somebody standing in front of me telling me exactly what I wanted to hear could be the exact same thing.
I mean, and it could be a piece that we could maybe have a value incorporate.
Yeah. I mean, I like the simplicity, but.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess when I read all of them. None of them, I would have gone, this is the perfect thing. First of all, it's not our district.
Right.
And so in my mind. If we, whoever we hire, I still feel like our plan is only going to be as good as we, as a district. Invest in putting what makes sense to actually, we could, we could have, we could pay somebody however much money. They could make us a very pretty thing that makes us look really amazing, but the practice of it could do jack squat to our district. And so to me, who we hire actually is kind of irrelevant. I think it's actually how committed we are to actually write something that can actually be accountably. I I like the transparency. The ones that I like the most have the communication. And if I was an outside community person. I would be like, that's what you're gonna do for my kid.
Right.
And I could, I could feel kind of empowered, like, hey, this is what you said you were going to do. And so. And I think that just, that's us driving it, not that person, I would think.
And it, it sounds like I'm having a hard time like articulating the thing is because that's what the whole process has felt like. I feel like whoever we pick, it really depends on how much effort we put into it.
Right, yeah.
I mean, who we choose is if we choose Dr. Campbell, Dr. Campbell has a requirement, as. Brian said, the superintendent in East Valley, Peter said, where I would just be same thing with like uh the other district she works with. She requires that you have X amount of groups. You have to prepare and set them up. You have to set up your student group. You have to set up your staff group. You have to set up your community group. And it's all about collecting well-rounded engagement and having all of these pieces of people involved. You'll see when she included that um East Valley example, that was just an example of her final product. That actually says on that one, how many people she engaged, how many people she interviewed, how many people she processed. So she had in the first introductory part how it was built as opposed to just the broad area district profile. So that was kind of the conversation Michael and I had, I think when we interviewed each person, was on process. So if we go with Dr. Campbell, she was very clear. You need to have all of these set up, so when I show up, I'm not wasting my time.
Yeah, she was straightforward with the process.
She was very straightforward on her process versus somewhere like, well, you could have whoever you would like. Um, you could have whoever you like. If you want them there, if you don't want them there, I can review the data. I cannot review the data. I can do it. So one was very, very kind of, whatever we want her to do, she'll do. Um, and another one was open on their processes on community engagement, but we kind of set the terms of the community engagement. But you have to have a level. Do we want to do surveys that get sent over to her that she reviews from home? Um, so I would say if we go with Dr. Campbell, it's a very defined process. I'm expecting you to set up this many meetings with this many people because I expect to see this many people. Otherwise, I don't want to put my name on the strategic plan that gets built.
Okay, so is there a way to, this might be a totally, absolutely, completely out there question. Is there a way to look at all three of these people and and who they've worked with and the success of those districts by using those strategic plans?
Mm-hmm. That's really easy to do. Um.
I mean, because I would not definitively say this is who we should pick, but the success.
Because we're not asking who can make a pretty plan. We're asking who could help with this.
Who who got them to the finish line and made it clear and and. Who who got him to the finish line and made it clear and and I don't care about. I mean, if she's got some strict way of running it and it's efficient and it's great, that's all fine and well. At the end of the day. What is their track history of making these plans and having those plans actually come to fruition and cross the line?
Yeah, but looking for effectiveness.
Yeah. That looks great.
Great.
It's all great.
Who about McLaren's again? Is that Paula?
Paula.
I mean, one one thought I did have about that is um. No matter what, at the end of the day, much of McLaren's world is still going to be similar to our world. And so it seems like there could be some. Ex- I'm gonna say expertise because she's already dug deep into that communities and understands some of the. I would say many of the the values and many of the the struggles. The demographics are very similar and things like that. So there could be some wisdom in thinking about somebody who's already. In- invested in some of some of that. Um, that's my only thought about the McLaren one.
When did she do McLaren's?
Just recently, isn't it?
Yeah, a year ago.
And we also have really good access to McLaren people and asking McLaren, some McLaren board members how they felt about it. Might be helpful as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, those are all.
We still need it to be a decision we make pretty quickly. Is that what?
Yeah, yeah. Enthusiasm was part of the process and I didn't really feel like enthusiasm was there was there with McLaren, but.
Enthusiasm as in driving them forward?
No, just in general, like when we were inquiring about the situation and I don't mean this in any. Bad way whatsoever. I just kind of felt like, you know, she's just like leaving it up to us to like, well, if you want to do this, that's great. If you want to use me, you know what I mean? And this, the other two were just excited seemed excited to get the ball rolling, which they should be, right? They're trying to sell them.
Right.
But uh, that's just that's just what I was.
Very, it was a very weird conversation.
It was very weird. That's why.
Okay, but I think then we would defer, I think, I think you guys met them.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think any one of them were panning off and saying you get to be in charge of everything, person we hire. And if you both felt like there was a person that you just connected with more. I don't know, I wouldn't be fine. I trust your judgment.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we can go wrong with uh either one. East Valley, like I said, got to talk to Brian. Brian had nothing but good things to say at Wasta about their experience, so.
I like the East Valley.
It's it's hard. It's it's hard to measure the two because my understanding from the one that's worked in Oakville. Has great results, um, has great qualitative results. People found her to be a very kind of unifying, very. Fun, you know, like like really bought into her vision. The one who's done East Valley and who bought districts in Washington like her because they have the hard quantitative outcomes. Because she comes back and says, you do these five things this year, next year you're gonna do these five things, and next year you're gonna do these five things.
Intentional.
So her district has the most new like quantitative results. Like, so it's easy to, when you ask the question, who has the most results? Dr. Campbell has the most results. I mean, she's the former superintendent in the Federal Way School District and won positive awards for converting Federal Way. Into a high post-achieving district. So but it's gonna be very targeted. You do this, you do this, we do this, we do this, and you get the outcomes.
I feel like though we're looking for someone that's very targeted and will have that leadership and and very defined plan. I I am, I don't like the wishy-washy. You can, you can do this, or do that, whatever you'd like. I mean.
Because which one did? Which one was Oakville's? That's the one that's just a single one-page thing? No.
No, that's Paula. It's uh Dr.
Dr. Brooks. It's Brooks. Brooks did did Oakville.
Well, don't ask me.
I brought it up, but wasn't very fancy. It was it was the actual plan, basically said.
This is all, no, that's Toledo.
That's Toledo. But that's also one of the ones she did. So Toledo, same thing, action plan.
Um, I mean, you met her. I guess this is my only other reservation. I feel like whoever we hire, they're gonna come and be the face of of us with me, with the community. I feel like we have to have some really strong, healthy community relationship connections and and just that. More than a slick presentation. I think we have to have somebody who the community can.
Get behind.
Get behind. And so um. I'm putting kind of big thing out there for you to have to pick on your own, but that would be my only reservation about whoever we hire.
Well, and that's the other caveat to all this. I don't think all of it's built on on that too. There's some tasks that are put out to committees, correct me if I'm wrong, right, Chris? So it's not gonna be just a head figure running all the time. Some of it is you meet with the board, you do a committee, and then you put another committee together of. Community members or whatever, you know, a mix. And then they had surveys that were going out.
That's actually a good clarification because Dr. Campbell's process is facilitating and ensuring each board member also owns. Part of each commu- different committee group. So then that way, each board member takes over ownership of each of the different committees in which we're getting feedback. So then that way, knowing that she's here temporarily and you're not, you're taking ownership over those pieces of feedback. So when I say her process is pretty prescribed, um, it's definitely not a presentation. It's a working with you as a board on how we're gonna go out and work with your proportions of the community, the student group, the staff group to get that feedback to build it. So it's it's not her doing the work. It's standing the board and the district up to own the work.
I I I like that.
And one other great thing that was exciting about what she was having is say to us, when she talks about the pillars that she works from, a lot of our pillars are somewhat built. In the sense that we have systematic data to use and her target areas to actually be able to measure change.
So which is why she's so kind of adamant, like if I'm coming in, I need to make sure the board member's ready, the student group is ready. We're gonna come in, I will facilitate the conversation. But it's not a presentation. It's pulling information out of the students and recording what the students have to say.
I feel like we keep circling her.
Yes.
I like the good decision.
Functionality.
And to reinforce it even, I went to a strategic plan thing at Wasta and it was. They did a ton of listening sessions and they did not have the consultant. It was with a couple of board members. And superintendent and they actually pointedly went out to the community and listened over and over and over again. But just an example of how it was from the people within the community that were doing the listening to gather the. The pieces to the strategic plan.
They didn't hire the kind of position that we're looking at hired.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so. So just reinforce that. All right. So I think we got a decision after that long conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that went into that.
Some of those conversations were early on, so. And I I really think if anybody actually watches this video, really thank each one of them for um taking the time to interview with us and and going to those questions. Really appreciate it. All right, with that. Celebration time?
You want to recess for five minutes?
Yes. Well, first of all, before we go to recess, I publicly would like to thank Brian for six years of service. Um, that you've given to uh your community and the students within um Elma School District, we truly appreciate it. So thank you very much for your time and service.
Thank you. You will be awarded a Elma. Plaque of Service. Just wanna make sure, so we we don't have the plaque yet. Still think everything's backward.
The will of government.
I understand.
I mean, we did just gonna be building, I mean, after forty some years, so.
Government's slow? No, not at all. All right, with that, I think we're going to take uh what'd be ten minutes, ten-minute break, recess. Um, uh, to. Celebrate ten fifteen, twenty, one thirty?
No.
Eight. I'll take eight.
All right, ten minutes. All right, move to recess.
Um, uh, Board Member Criselli.
This will move a second to recess for celebration of service. Chris Lee, uh, is there any discussion?
I don't mind if they guess, okay, well.
All is a BRCI.
Hi.
Hi, all is a BRCI.
Hi.
Right. All right, out of the gate, public comment. None? All right, unfinished business, approval of policy one thousand and five, key functions of the board second.
I make a motion to approve policy one zero zero five, key functions of board, second final reading.
Been moved in second into approved policy thousand and five, key functions of the board, second final reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to any motion carries. Approval of policy eleven oh five, director district, second.
I'll move for the approval of policy eleven oh five, director districts, second and finally.
Spin move second to approve policy eleven oh five, director district, second and final reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of policy eleven fifteen, board member resignation, second and final reading.
I approve, uh, make a motion to approve policy, what am I saying? Uh, one, uh, eleven fifteen, board member resignation, second and final reading.
I'll second.
She's been moved in second to approve policy eleven fifteen, board member resignation, second and final reading, is there any discussion?
Should be policy eleven fourteen.
Eleven fourteen.
Yeah.
Oh, because.
I see, yep, you don't have it up here on this, that's fine.
Nice.
Good catch. Back to amend.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and my motion for approval of policy one 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 five to one 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 four, board member resignation, second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Spin move to second to amend the policy to eleven fourteen from eleven fifteen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of policy eleven fourteen, board member resignation, second and final reading as amended.
Move for the approval of policy eleven fourteen, board member.
Sorry, then it moved in second, we just got a vote on it.
Okay.
Uh, all those, any, is there any further discussion?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of new policy, the real, eleven fifteen vacancy, second and final readings.
I'll move the approval of new policy one 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 five, vacancy, second and final reading.
One one one.
I'll second that.
You want to move in second to approve the new policy eleven fifteen vacancy, second and final reading, is there any further discussion, or is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. All right, new business, discussion and approval of policy forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement in school districts, first reading.
Um, this is by, actually, new business, A, B, and C are prompted by a press, uh, a press access publication request, and under the guise and recommendation of our legal counsel, just shows that we're just following legal processes, that if we're requesting, we have an obligation under perfa to not release private information unless there's a warrant in hand, and just reaffirms that we just have to make sure that the legal processes are in place.
I think that's fair too, I saw that it was last updated like in twenty twenty, so.
They are slightly different than the WASD, though, correct?
They are slightly different than the WASD one, and yeah, I can answer kind of questions on what's prompting this.
If you. And address just the differences with the WASD piece.
I don't have it open right now, I think this was one.
Like even.
This is just drafted, drawing higher clarity around the requirement of, um, perpa, and ensuring that legal requirements for releasing over private student information has been followed. So it's just kind of leaning a little bit more clearly defining those processes on the, the, the Student Privacy Information Act that are, so I mean, a lot of the differences is are drafted specifically by our legal counsel.
Where normally what we see is, is being drafted by WASD.
Yes, this one's drafted by our lawyer.
Specifically from our lawyer.
Yeah, and this is specifically built around a records request on our compliance with perpa for a large publication.
Stays in alignment with, basically.
I was gonna say, it's at what, what WASD wants in addition to. Basically.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the discussion and discussion and approval to adopt policy forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement in school districts, first reading.
That's okay.
It's been moved second to approve policy forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement in school districts, first, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Oh, cause it does actually say procedures, okay. All right, next is discussion approval to adopt, uh, procedures forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement in schools, first reading.
I'll move for the approval to adopt procedure forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement, schools first reading.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve to adopt procedure forty three hundred, limiting immigration enforcement in schools, first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, maybe motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy forty three ten, district relationships with immigration and other government agencies, first reading.
I'll make a motion for discussion, to approve, discussion and approval of policy forty three ten, district relationships with immigration and other government agencies, first reading.
That's okay.
Spin move is seconded to approve policy forty three ten, district relationship with immigrations and other government agencies, first reading, starting discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of resolution number six dash twenty five twenty six, replacement educational programs and operation levy.
So I am hoping that we always come in at or below what we already are asking our taxpayers by, I was very conservative in my assessment values of what our tax base is off of, so it's a guess, but, um, I looked at an average over the last ten years, and then the five year, and I went up by four percent for the twenty five year, twenty six year, and up three percent in the twenty seven year, and only because in looking at, um, fiscally how things are going, if interest rates drop, that's going to change our assessed value down the road. And what they're saying is sooner or later, they're gonna have to drop, so that's why I didn't go up as high as I could have based off of the ten year average. And I mean, even in twenty and three to twenty four, I think it was, we actually had a negative assessed value of nine, nine percent. So I kind of wanted to keep that in mind to make sure we do for the taxpayers what we promise, and that is to keep the rate the same. And you notice it does not make a very big increase on our levy.
Right. I'm making motion for the approval of resolution number six, two five two six, replacement educational programs and operation levy.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded to approve resolution number six dash two five two six, replacement educational programs and operation levy, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Superintendent report.
Um, a random enrollment report, superintendent report, um. I don't know, I guess I've been putting it out, I didn't put out a superintendent report last week because I was presenting, and then I was spending the end of the week with Michael, so when I asked Michael, I said I wasn't gonna write it up since we were spending the last three days before it went out together anyway. And our experience is.
It sounds so bad.
What?
I had to spend it with Michael.
Oh, it's Michael and I were together. What do I want to write up, Mike? We're spending our.
So, um, is that format working for you, though, as far as, uh, what I've included in that report?
Tenth grade is a hundred and eighty two kids, excuse me, there's a, like, for seventh.
Oh, you were jumping to enrollment, I'll go to enrollment, let's do it.
I thought we, oh, you weren't superintendent, I'm sorry.
In the report, no, it's great.
Yes, sometimes it's hard to tell the difference.
No, it's good, like, we talked, as long as it's not taxing you, um, you know, that wasn't, uh, intent, so as we talked, discussed that it wasn't an actual, having left to put out that report, so.
But that, no, it's fine, that, that, uh, tenth grade class is a big bubble, you can see that there's a bit of an enrollment drive with the, you know, you'll see high school's gone up by about five FTE, almost ten FTEs since September. So our high school numbers are continuing to rise, middle school numbers are coming down a bit, um, but beyond that, our enrollment's staying pretty stable.
Yeah, next year when we talk, they'll know the next kindergarten class. That's the number.
I don't know, it doesn't seem like we have them, but it's hard to have it, his kids are off some T Ks, it's hard, you know, but my child, it feels like hard to pursue up.
Is that the max amount we can take for T K, Chris? The game is now.
Only on thirteenth.
We're only on thirteenth, that, just, how's that work, is that district wise?
This is what you get, not what you get.
So other districts could get more, or are they?
They're all good, they're like, it's very, uh, different amounts. And when they looked at was the average we had, I think, the last years, and that's what we got.
How's that work?
Yeah. All right, I was just curious, cause I was noticing that Oakville had quite a few too, so.
If, if.
They threw out the prior.
Oh.
When they froze it, they said whatever you want, sir, but you froze that, so if you're a district that had zero, that's zero, if you're a district that served forty eight or six for three, you got to keep your, your number, so, and it irrel- irregardless of, of.
Yeah, rounds my. Yeah, rounds my week off of listening about legislature and O S B I, but that's besides the point. Any other questions about, uh, enrollment before we go to budget? All right, budget.
Hey, you guys have your reports, end of September, I'm still not October to end, um, I just got the books, those, so I'll bring you a year end report, so you guys can see now, um, notice, I mean, we finished the year with six point nine nine million, so you know where we ended the year. Um, September is a big payout month, we have extra days and stay days that go out, so, um, we did drop a little in fund balance, we're at six point two right now. And remember, we're being paid off of budget, not actual, but our enrollment is running right around budget, so we shouldn't have much of a change in January. Um, and we did not lose any federal funding, just so you know, we are getting all of our federal funding.
Good deal.
So we're on track, just to do what we normally do. Any questions on the reports?
Take a good hard look. I could send them to.
Said it's not a budget report, didn't you have the two?
I don't know. We can keep it as a souvenir on payment.
I'm, I'm just thinking of we have increased the ending fund balance up to a more respectable level that is required by the state, so that's.
Well, it's not, it's required by the auditor.
Or the auditor.
Guys actually have made it six percent, but no, our, our payroll has up quite a bit this year. Um, payroll is running about eight point one million versus last year, we, I mean, we're up about two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand difference from the prior year. Um, we did lose a little bit of staff, not much through attrition, so it just goes up.
Yeah, and there's a large rumor going around, the legislature wants to pitch at eight and a half percent, um, uh, fund balance at all times.
Yeah. And if they do that, that's what we have to.
Yeah. Meaning you can't roll below it, and I don't know what that would mean, or how that would work, cause much of the bigger districts can't eat that right now.
Mm-hmm.
It gives you a.
Yeah, that does protect our bargaining, yeah.
Cause of the districts that are in binding conditions across the state, it would be less likely to have districts in binding conditions if they had a half percent, apparently.
Can you bring back the salary schedule, that would help.
So, um, lots of talk, there was lots of legislative talk, for sure, I actually ended up going back and going to that SCAP class, so I guess we'll skip right back into, uh, go to the order unless you guys have budget reports, though. I, I realized that I was gonna get to Cooper soccer game way too early, so, um, I went back and listened to their, 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 uh, presentation. Uh, so they're getting ready to, um, pitch a whole mo- modernization pilot program for the SCAP program, which is the, uh, school construction, uh, program, yeah. Right now it's broken, they clearly know that, legislature knows that, nobody's accessing their, their SCAP funds because nobody can pass a bond, and in order to get your SCAP funds, you have to pass in order to be able to use them that month, you have to have skin in the game according to the legislature in order to tap into that. So there's a couple of different things they're talking about doing in a modernization pilot, so instead of having to redo an entire school, you actually could do portions, and you'd be able to access a portion of that SCAP money along the way.
Interesting.
Yeah, and that pilot program, though, even if they did, it wouldn't start until twenty seven, twenty eight, and it would only be a pilot, they don't figure that most of the stuff that they're gonna recommend to legislature will actually happen until twenty thirty, the legislature tasked them with, we do not want you to come back and tell us you need more money, we want you to tell us how the system's broken, and how can we release the funds that are there now, so, and they also feel there'll be less, yes, exactly. They also feel like there will be less grant money, and it will go back to how it was prior to, um, the bond flip flop. Uh, they, they really, in like, it was a huge enlightenment on bond capacity for districts, like you take Mount Baker, and in order to take the same bond out as a very large district, like, uh, I don't know, I get.
Fed away.
Fed away. They could tax it two dollars per thousand and get a large amount of money, whereas Mount Baker would have to tax it twenty dollars per thousand in order to make up the difference because of the disparity in property value, um, in the two areas and the amount of people, so it was pretty enlightening to see how messed up it is, and it needs to be fixed. So, um, on top of that, there's all kinds of other things that, uh, went on at WASD, it was a really good conference.
Are they looking at changing the passive percentage for bonds?
No, that was the other stipulation that legislature said, do not come back to us and say that, that we need to change the sixty percent bond, they said, there's, there was like three things that were hands, this is hands off, I can't remember the third, but the, one of them was the sixty percent, and the other was, uh, don't come back to us and say we need more money. Their, their solution to the percentage is through capital improvement levies, they, they envisioned, um, the consultant that was pitching this whole thing, they're pitching to legislature, that you would see more districts doing capital improvement levies, and using a portion of that SCAP money to do, um, different projects in aging building, cause right now, you, you have lots of districts that have aging buildings, but they may have like different portions to the wing, but they're getting, uh, penalized for one portion of that building being slightly newer than the rest of the building, so they can't do a whole project on that building.
With us.
Us.
But if you don't have a full bond, you can't build.
Correct, so this building has different wings built at different times, so everybody always comes back and says, well, yeah, that was built in ninety five, and that was built in this.
Building is on the record being built in nineteen eighty six, because that's when the newest part of the building were built, but the oldest part of the buildings were built in nineteen fifty.
Yeah.
Um, but as a result, under the current model, we're actually one of the SCAP, the new SCAP.
Yeah, we were in there, Nelmo was on the little graph.
Because, uh, because we actually, all of the problems that Michael is describing.
Yeah.
Fits us to a T.
But how do you not be a dog chasing your tail, you, you know, you can use SCAP money, but you can do this, but you can only do it to do portions at a time, you're never gonna get a full building.
No, it's, it's actually, but we, we, we're already down that road of not doing a full building, so we're, we're eighty years down the road of not doing a full building. So the district has already made a commitment of eighty years of not doing a full building, which is why we haven't been able to access the full SCAP. So I think if I'm hearing Michael correctly, which is great, actually, because it's taking our, our scenario into account and saying, well, great, you can do a capital project levy and redo the gym and the C T E spaces, and we'll calculate that space as a nineteen fifties construction instead of a nineteen eighty eight six construction.
Okay.
So actually, I see this benefiting us.
Oh, absolutely, it's gonna benefit most, a lot of the rural districts that have problems, I mean, they, they, they even had the consultant put together a video that shows the problems. They have one school district where high schoolers have to do what they call a bucket brigade when it rains, and move the buckets around so that it can collect the water in buckets, because they can't afford a new roof, and the state is not relinquishing funds to do capital improvement projects.
Appreciate the clarity on that, because I was thinking it was like a negative to the other side, but that makes more sense to me.
I think, yeah, I mean.
You only have so much money in that SCAP fund too, right, so you can take some, um, and there was some limitations that he talked about, about how much you can in matching, but ultimately, the legislature has said you must have skin in the game in order to access that money.
Hmm.
Yeah, so. So maybe some good news.
Maybe we have the whole.
But probably not, not till five years down the road, unless we get a pilot program.
I will say the play was incredible.
Good.
So.
You made a bet.
Both showings on Saturday, and, uh, winter sports have begun.
Yes. Uh, the kids.
Uh, the kids have done an amazing job with football, um, I, just, I mean, I think it still really speaks to, as a community, um, how many families are struggling also with food insecurity, um, at the elementary school, Meredith was telling me, I think one of the days, uh, it was like a handful of cans, like, it really, but this weekend they did the, um, the Christmas bazaar, and they brought in over, oh, just shy of six thousand dollars in donations, of cash donations for, for the local food bank, so I think that's a, those kids set out lots of hours and collected money, and just even a count at the.
It were cold and wet.
Cold and wet, sacrificed to be up there for their shift, but, um, I appreciate those kids working hard for the other families.
There was that new Alma McClary Lions group they're forming, and I feel like the students did a great job, they wanted to find a way to raise money in the face of the food shortage. And I feel like the students came in and said, hey, we have a huge system, we've already contacted the food banks, would you be interested in supporting our work? And I think that Lions donated fifteen hundred dollars to the high school.
Nice.
So I feel like, uh, going through a collaborative effort was a good payout.
I should mention really fast, going back to that SCAP thing, because I wish, they do have a website, it's, uh, abetterscap.org, and SCAP is S C A P, and they are really pushing really hard for people to reach out to their local legislature, um, and representative to, uh, basically lobby them to make change, so. Because this is, uh, apparently come to legislature before, and, uh, they didn't have enough push, yeah. With that.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Been moved and seconded during the meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay, motion adjourn, meeting adjourned, and motion adjourned.
Something, thank you, Ryan, appreciate that.